I'm going to call this school committee business meeting of January 4th, 2023 to order. It is 5:31 PM and the first order of business is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for my nation and without individual liberty and justice.
We're getting better.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. I'd also want to acknowledge, say that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. Next order of business is to ratify the agenda. We are still waiting for Sean, so we might move a few things around, but pretty straightforward tonight, take a motion to ratify.
Make a motion to ratify tonight's agenda as presented with possible moves. I don't know how to word that, really.
Flexibility. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Vote yes as well. So it doesn't look like we have any public comment. And so until Sean arrives, we can start with item four, which is the approval of the minutes of December 21st. These look a little different.
Oh, different, so I just like them.
Oh, that's right. It looks kind of just like, yeah. Do we have any edits or changes?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 21st school committee meeting as presented.
Motion by Kathy, Dawn's second.
I'll do a second.
Okay, Dawn, it sounds like you have some little discussion.
I do.
Okay.
Just because of the brevity of the minutes, which do tend to summarize the things, I think it would make, I think it would make sense if in the minutes we subsequently attached the link to the YouTube video of the meeting so that that was formalized if someone wanted to go back and look at the full discussion versus the summarized items that are listed here. It would give them a good path to accomplish that, so.
Okay.
That would be, I guess, my suggestion that we amend the minutes to include that.
Whoa.
And include it subsequently also.
Okay, any other suggestions, changes?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, how many meetings have you?
Just wait.
Every day.
Just wait. Something come up.
Okay, so, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Well, I think we need, we need.
We have to approve the change.
Yeah, approve his amendment first.
Well, I just, I thought we were going to do it with amendments, but that's fine.
Well.
Go ahead.
You have to amend your motion.
I have to amend my motion to approve the minutes for December 21st with the addition of the link to the Zoom, of the Zoom link for the meeting.
All right.
No.
It's not a Zoom link.
It's the YouTube.
The YouTube link for the meeting, the internet, digital, the link to the digital meeting.
Link to the digital copy of the.
There you go. That works.
Sherry will clean that right up.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Nothing else besides, I agree with that.
Okay.
Second.
So thank you, Matt. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I abstain. So that carries. All right, I saw Sean come in. We, you are just on our agenda. We kind of skipped over you to come back to you, so we are going to introduce. Patty?
Yes. So it's our pleasure to welcome Deputy Sheriff Sean Cahill. He is retiring from his role with the county. We have had the benefit of his wisdom, expertise, knowledge, personality, calm demeanor for a little over 10 years, maybe 12 years. He has primarily worked with the Quasnet School and then a little bit you did at the middle school for a couple of years when we brought the great program up there. I'm going to let Principal O'Brien give a little bit more detail, but I just want to say, starting out from me personally, there were opportunities when I reached out to you for advice on several matters a while back and you were, because you've worn various hats in your private world, and you were always very helpful and supportive, and I greatly value the impact that you've had on me, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Get comfortable. Good evening, everyone. It is really my pleasure to have Deputy Sean Cahill with us tonight, and it just makes me cry because I hate seeing him leave us. He's been so instrumental with our students and our families and our staff for those 12 years, and here at Quasnet especially. So just a couple things. A great instructor for the Great Program, so he loves his corny jokes, and we always celebrate that, and so many of the children have written wonderful little great jokes for you here, but they appreciate all of the skits and all of the work you have done. So Deputy Cahill has also given us not just time for the Great Program and Fitment 6th Grade, but has spent time here on time at recess and lunch with kids, which has really been fabulous because it's been in real life lessons and it's seeing, hey, didn't we just do this skit about being kind to others in class? And now he was able to really bring that forward in the lunchroom or at recess, so it was a fabulous addition. Deputy Cahill also participated in our High Five Fridays with Mashpee Police Department. He has always been there for our 6th grade floor occupancy.
Always won.
Which, yes. And it's been with his help, and it's just been such a great support to have you there. Many of our families over the last at least five years have benefited from Christmas trees, and it was through Deputy Cahill's work to support those families. You have been a both been instructor for families in the evening along with Nurse Stacy, so another fabulous giving of your time to Mashpee community. You supported the cyber training with Mashpee Police in Osceola Hennessy for our 6th grades and 5th grades last year. Kate Kidmills, she was our free delivery man for a while, and the sheriff's truck and car delivery was just, it really helped the program get up and running. And so without your help and support, Sean, it would have been really hard to do that. But not only that, he also made sure that the sheriff's department sent us money every year. So I think you were really forceful in getting those donations, and again, we would not have that, and that benefits both Coombs and Quasnet students. So your influence has been outstanding, and I'm going to really miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
No.
Well, we have a little matter to do.
Thank you very much.
I know Mary Kate tried very hard to find some position for Sean to stay on with us. Didn't work out, and I believe somebody else scooped him up.
It's been a lot of fun.
Although I will have a little extra time in my day where I will have Deputy Cahill talking to me.
Yeah, wish, come on in.
I think I was a beneficiary of one of those classes because I remember meeting you, I think, in one of the classes that Quasnet hosted for parents. And you always just had a really, I loved your teaching style, and I think that's probably why the kids connected with you, too, just very direct and sort of down-to-earth, and so we'll definitely miss you, and thank you so much for your service to the district.
Thank you.
And don't be a stranger, come back anytime.
I will.
Well, his, and his, his style was very akin to the other Sean Withington in terms of that, just the way he can connect with children in a very calm and, you know, I can't even sort of put words on what you have. You have that it part for being a kid whisperer, as we used to say to Sean. You're one of those, too.
In case you forgot, when we first started the Great Program, Patty was the principal.
Yep.
Let's do it here, let's do it here, let's do it here. All right, you say so. I appreciate you.
Appreciate you, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. See you soon, I hope.
Yes.
Okay, so now we move on to the main attraction for the night, which is the public hearing on the superintendent's recommended FY24 Mashpee Public Schools budget. Take it away, Patty.
So this is the public hearing for my proposed.
Anyway, this is the public hearing for the superintendent's proposed FY24 budget for Mashpee. This is a requirement. At this point, the budget is my recommended budget. In two weeks, the school committee will be voting on this budget or a version of this budget that will become their budget. So that's the process that we have to do. So up until the 18th of January, it is still considered to be my recommended budget for FY24. Just to recap, we do, two points to make before I say. We have posted the slideshow on our website, so anyone who wants to study it a little bit more is welcome to do so. And also on the website, and this, these slides are based off of the narrative that we have developed that goes along with the budget. But currently, we have approximately 1,460 students. These are some of the, the points that we like to focus on in terms of the school. It's very important to me that everyone involved with Mashpee focuses on the whole child. We recognize that they're students, but they're human beings first. There's a lot of relationship building that we put into our students. We are a small district, which we actually think is an asset, and there is a lot of inter-school opportunities, multi-age learning that we promote. We are what I consider a connected community, and I'm very grateful to work in the town of Mashpee because as a community, they are very supportive of our schools. And one of the highlights or what we often talk about for students in Mashpee is that there are no fees charged. So unlike other districts, you don't pay to ride a bus in Mashpee, you don't pay to play sports. As a graduating senior, you don't pay for your cap and gown, you don't pay for your yearbook. If you are taking an AP class and wish to take the exam, we cover the exam fees as well. So there is a lot of focus on trying to make sure that opportunities are available for all of our students and that barriers are removed if we can do that. So here's sort of a overview of the FY24 budget, which is this lovely column here. And my recommended budget, so you can see the FY23, you can see FY24. The difference between the FY24 budget and the FY23 budget that I recommended is a 3.07% increase. You can see the dollar value. But from that, we offset our budget with funds from our school choice program. This is the amount, the 654,198 is what we are using to offset in this current year. For next year, for FY24, we're projecting to use 736,095 from school choice program. So then that gets adjusted downward. So my, the requested budget for next year, the 24,569,179 represents a 2.81% increase over that FY23 requested amount. One other thing we have to do in terms of the budget is we put in for capital improvement items, and you'll see that on a later slide. But we build that into the budget with the, with the assumption that if it's not approved in CIP, we want to still, we consider those items absolutely necessary, and we're going to make the purchase. So last year, we had 95,400 in capital improvement that was approved by the town, so that gets deducted. This year, we're requesting 165, and hopefully that will get approved. So here is the new number that we would be requesting monies from the town, 24,404,179. When you compare that to our FY23 budget, it's a 2.53% increase. This budget here, though, for FY23 was the school committee approved budget. Then there was a slight little change later on in the process, sometime between January and May. The town manager recommended that the school budget, that what we were asking for be reduced by 400,000. That is what the town meeting voters approved, so, oops. So the town appropriated budget for the current year that we're in, FY23, is 23,402,261. When you compare that, which is low by 400,002 this year's, the increase is 4.28%. So last year's percent increase was minimal. So in a way, you could look at this amount and say that that's almost two years' worth, which I'll show you on a different slide. Does anyone have any questions on this slide?
I only wanted to give you the opportunity to, to express that the amount of the choice offset is equivalent to what we anticipate taking in.
Yes, so our school choice program funds are based on students who are enrolled in our district but live in other towns, and it is one year in arrears. So this number represents the, the school choice program funds we'll collect in the current year for the kids that are here now. So we, we use it one year later because then we know for sure what that number is. So did I say that right, or did I twist myself up just then? It's a one year in arrears, and it's based on the students that we have. We have 127 students currently choicing in.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Or comment. Can you just talk about some of the challenges that you have in formulating a budget at this point?
Oh, yes, so I was going to, there is a slide about the process, but I want to say acknowledging, first I want to acknowledge Ashley Lopes, our Director of Finance. She does a tremendous amount of work on this budget and definitely monitoring the budget once it's approved and all of the spending that takes place. The leadership team also did a lot of work in developing this budget, but it really starts almost a year from, back from now, when the teachers are asked to submit their needs, not, not personnel-wise, but there's, there's more of the operational piece. That's usually done like at the high school by departments, at the elementary school it's by grade level. That gets fed into the principals. They then also look at sort of school-wide needs. That all gets sort of worked into each school's individual operating budget, exclusive of the personnel side. And then we meet, Dr. Hanscom, the Assistant Superintendent, and myself, and Ashley, we're Director of Finance, Ashley Lopes, I should use your name. We meet with each principal, and we go over detail by detail, every single line that they have submitted, and we look for if there's any mistakes, we ask questions, why do you need this? And so I just want to assure you that when you look at these numbers for FY24, every single item in there has been looked at. Within this number, about 81% of our budget is personnel. That is also, can be pretty intricate because you're looking at each teacher, where they're going to be next year on the, based on their contract. Some people change lanes because of more education. Some people have, there's different components that go into it, but that is looked at on each individual person, and that gets added into getting at that 81%. So it's not, I just want you to know it's very specific down to the individual employee that's in the district, and I do appreciate Ashley for all her work on the personnel piece, too.
Just one other follow-up on that. Can you also then talk just briefly about some of the big variables that you have to make assumptions on in regard to, say, out of district or transportation?
Well, there are a few later slides that break that piece out, which we could maybe do it then, if you're good with that.
As long as it's covered.
Okay, it's coming. This next slide basically makes sure everybody remembers that we currently have a Plan for Success, which is our strategic plan. This particular budget for FY24 will represent the year three of implementation of that. And for the Plan for Success, we have four pillars, the Portrait of a Graduate, diversity, equity, and inclusion, teaching and learning, and then the fourth one is Mashpee Connected Community. It's very important that really all of our work and our decisions fit within this strategic plan because that, this is really our roadmap. And then each, there are other action steps under each of them, but just to read the, the strategic objective is to fully implement the Portrait of a Graduate. So we did a lot of work developing the portrait, but we need to make it come alive in terms of student learning, teacher lesson planning, and making sure that all of our community understands the importance of that. The second pillar, the strategic objective, is to honor diversity, provide equity, and ensure inclusion throughout the Mashpee Public Schools. That's a multi-layered initiative that will take multiple years to accomplish, but we are making baby steps along the way. Teaching and learning is to fully align teaching and learning pre-K to 12 with our multi-tiered system of supports, which is MTSS. That's a framework we use to do our work. And then the last pillar is Mashpee Connected Community, strengthen and grow positive and reciprocal relationships between the district and the community. And we have benefited greatly from working on those relationships, but we can continue to grow that. This is just sort of a graphic of our Portrait of a Graduate. So the five competencies that we want every graduate to, to be able to demonstrate is that they are purposeful collaborators and communicators, each graduate is an engaged citizen, each graduate is resilient, that they are empowered knowledge seekers, critical thinkers, and problem solvers. And I had a thought on that, went out of my head. Maybe it'll come back. Any questions on that? You're not getting to see the slide, Stacy. This is just sort of a recap of the process we go through. I already talked about, about a year ago is when we start. You can see the things in blue are yet to happen, and right now we are here, where we're having the public hearing on the budget. We did present to the town manager on the 14th of December. That also included someone from the Finance Committee, someone from the Select Board. So we went over everything in detail. They have our narrative, they have all of the line items by account and everything. So every year when we do do our budget, we make sure that the school committee has sort of determined what, what they want to make sure our budget is going to take care of. So obviously, it has to ensure all legal and contractual mandates are met. It needs to include sufficient operating and capital funds to address year three, like I said, of the Plan for Success, provide the current level of educational services for all Mashpee students, move the district forward in meeting the increasing demands for tech in all educational settings, which is changing all the time, any upgrades to the curriculum that are determined necessary, and then address the increasing social, emotional needs of our students, and that staffing and programming. It also assumes that we maintain a $250,000 floor in our school choice program funds, and that's for emergencies or unanticipated expenses. And then lastly, it also assumes that the ongoing practices and protocols to maintain our facilities that are healthy and safe for staff and students are funded through the DPW's FY24 budget and beyond. That includes appropriate and adequate staffing, the filters for the HVAC system, hand sanitizers, sanitizing wipes, disinfectant, disinfectant, which we currently are disinfecting every night in all the classrooms. We're a little unique to other school districts where our facilities, custodians, maintenance, and all expenses related to the buildings themselves fall under the town, the DPW. In many districts, they fall under the school. That's per the charter. So here is a slide that shows 2024 revenue sources. Total grants, we're not showing there to be any change from the current year. School choice, we talked about, this is what is coming in based on the students that are currently, so FY23 funds were really the students that were there in FY22, and this number represents the kids currently in our, enrolled in school choice for this year. Then the next line shows the Town of Mashpee appropriation. Last year, this is what my budget is going to be requesting for this year. And then, do you want me to read that number? Okay. And then the Chapter 70 state aid is currently shown as the same as last year because we're not going to know that number yet, not till March of 2023. So let's see. Oh, so when you're looking at the total cost, though, to run a school system, just to note that it also includes the annual cost to the town, to the town for the schools, which includes capital improvement projects, expenses related to facilities, which I just said on the last slide, and then our health insurance is under the town side. All of these get reassigned in terms of the end-of-year reporting that Ashley does. So we do capture that cost, but that's not in the numbers up there. And then the assumption for 2024 is that grant funding will remain the same, which we already sort of talked about, and then we don't know if the Chapter 70 will inch its way up a little bit until March. And then again, I just wanted to emphasize down here again with the little red asterisk that Mashpee voters approved the town manager's recommended $400,000 reduction to the school committee approved FY23 budget. So it, the school committee approved $23,821, and the voters approved $23,402,261. All right, so here's a little bit detailed, Mr. Myers, a little bit more detailed, this first slide is personnel. We have listed the personnel by, mostly by schools, there's a couple of categories there. I know the print is small, so I might stand over here to talk about that, but the FY24 proposed personnel budget includes estimated wages for Mashpee Teachers Association, Unit A teachers, Unit B leadership positions within the association, and non-union positions. So this, these numbers for FY24, there is an element of unknown there because we have not, we don't have the ratified contracts yet in place for FY24. The only group that we have those in place for are the paraprofessionals and the clerical, which is Unit C. Those are known numbers. And then up here, districted, this number, when you look at sort of, oh, that looks like a big increase, that includes system-wide obligations, which has to do with retirements and buybacks and things like that, and the Assistant Food Services Director. It's about $42,000, which previously was housed or covered under the revolving account. We would like to shift that to where it belongs. Also, previous to this year, the position, although there wasn't a person in it, was a clerical position, but not labeled as an Assistant Food Services Director. So the person that we were able to hire has a nutritional degree and also does a lot of the clerical pieces, so it's, it's more capturing what her role is. Then for the three schools, included there because it's spread out, is the addition of a float nurse position. There's a piece in all three of the schools. Over the past two years, we have had that funded through a grant, and it allows us to meet increased care and service requirements post-COVID and addresses the scarcity of nurse substitutes. So that's in these three areas. And then also, although my thing's in the way, I don't know what that number is, let's see. Well, anyway, somewhere, where's my multilingual? Oh, Curriculum and Technology. So Curriculum and Technology includes the addition of two multilingual learner education teachers. two multilingual learner education teachers, and that's due to the increase in English-language learners that have moved into the district. That was in the budget for FY23, but part of the cut meant that we didn't put those positions into play. And then also included there is, it's about 40,000 for personnel for the summer camp discovery, the Falcon Camp Discovery. Prior two years, we were able to use ESSER funds for that, correct? So we just want to make sure that becomes part of the budget and is something we rely on because, again, Mashpee provides this opportunity for a five-week camp for our, for students who want to participate, and we have not charged them for that. In the past few years, we've included transportation. I don't know if that's going to happen moving forward, but that was with the COVID money. Any questions on this? And then here, here is the operating budget side, not the personnel side. You can see all the categories. This is our FY24 budget. Again, we have to show these two offsets. So up in, and Ashley, correct me where they're sitting. Here?
Yes, they sit in the Curriculum Instruction Technology.
Right. So we will be reducing by the $736.095 out of the School Choice program and then removing the $165,000 in capital if that gets approved, hopefully late January is when they do that. So the operating side of the budget went up 1.39% from last year's, which I didn't actually emphasis show. Let me just go back for a minute. The personnel increase you can see here is at 4.98. Do you have any questions on this slide? You can always go back if you do. This is a little information on the historical budget going back to FY20. What's interesting to note here, so our 4.5% increase for FY24 is based off of my proposed FY24 budget compared to the FY23 town appropriation, which, as I will remind you, is $400,000 less than the school committee voted on. So that looks like, you know, a large number. But if you look at this number, which was last year's, it's .44, where generally we're in this range of 2, 2.5 kind of range. So if you want to look at it, that we're trying to make up for what we lost from last year. The need is still there. We didn't fund our multilingual education teachers. So that's sort of important information. Yes?
Pat, may I ask a question?
You may.
So when we have contractual obligations that exceed 2% for 81% of our budget, how do we make up a difference when we only get a .4% increase from our appropriation?
Right. So for FY23, and Ashley, you might want to support on this. Nicole's question is, we know that for this particular school year that we're in right now, generally, there was a 2.5% increase roughly for the bulk of our members, which is Unit A teachers, yet that was the percentage that we're given. How are we making sure that we're not going back to the town for additional funds?
So there's a couple places in the budget where we have retirement, so we will be hiring new employees, hopefully at a lower cost. I budget for a lower cost at $80,000. But if you look at our salary schedule, they can start lower than that. So there can potentially be savings there. Other places, the substitute lines, we level fund the substitute lines year over year, but if it's, it's a non-COVID year, right? So hopefully, we don't have as many teachers out, and maybe we don't have as many maternity leaves and things of that nature, and we can use that money. Another place, which was the discussion, was using the School Choice funds that we have, which the school committee needs to vote to use those funds. Currently, we do not have a vote in place to use $400,000 of School Choice money. So as the budget continues on for FY23, if I notice that we are not going to meet our obligations, I will first have to come back to school today to see if they will vote, you will vote to approve those funds. If not, we would have to go back to the town.
And can I also add, so during these COVID years, people's plans have changed, employees' plans have changed. So we build this budget so far ahead. So our current year budget was built in 21, I don't know, so far ahead, 18, I'm going to go with about 18 months ahead of when it starts to get implemented. And we had people who chose to retire. And like Ashley said, they may have gone out quite a bit higher, and some of the people coming in are lower. But there have been more retirement plan changes. Someone decided I'm going to go a little earlier than I was going to over these, this COVID time, and they can do that. So sometimes that-
We also did not hire one of the English language teachers in this budget. We're meeting the needs right now, but as Dr. Hanson has talked about throughout our meetings this year, we do have an influx of multilingual learners coming in. So when that changes, the need for staffing will change. So if it gets to be, you know, April and May, we need to hire, then we have to reassess and have another conversation.
Okay. Let me just wrap that up for a second. I think I just wanted to point out that when we, when you see increases that are lower than what our contractual obligations are for, you know, 81% of our budget, then that means we have to get creative. We have to hope we get lucky. We have to not do things that we had planned and budgeted to do. And it's a, it's a real burden on the district. And, you know, so I'm pleased to see that you're requesting to make up that difference in this year's budget. And I appreciate that you explained the rationale for that. Don?
So I guess you really haven't answered the question that I asked previously, are these, in regard to some of the big unknowns that you have to make assumptions on, and how that impacts the budget, then can either impact it positively or negatively, such as the English language learners, if we get a big influx. Obviously, that creates a legal obligation for the school, and we have to be able to cover that. Similarly, if we have special education requirements or McKinney-Vento obligations that were, that by law were obligated to cover, you're making a guess, a best guess, right?
Yeah, I think some of these two lines here, the additive tuition and transportation, are the most difficult to-
Can you use the mic?
Yes, I can. These two line items, the special, out of district tuitions and the transportation are the two, they're pretty significant portion of this operating side of the budget, and they, they are somewhat unpredictable. We do our best. So when you look at out of district tuitions, we actually know who those students are. We know what schools they go to. We know how old they are. So we, we have a lot that allows us to make a pretty educated prediction. But for example, out of district placements, out of district tuitions are supposedly going up significantly. They have not had an increase, did not supposedly get all the COVID supports that we did. That's a problem. We can have a student, which we just recently did, move into the district that is an out of district placement. So for the rest of this year, there's a little cost sharing, and then the student will be aging out. But we have a pretty significant piece that when we built this budget, wasn't a known factor. So there's definitely, this, these two lines would be the most stressful in terms of hoping that we have planned appropriately. It's a little unlike any other areas of the town in terms of town budgeting because you just can't predict when families move to Mashpee and what the needs of their children are, and we need to make sure we do the best that we can for every student.
And to think about it calendar-wise, so when we build this budget, we work with a special ed team, and as of September of 2022, we knew the kids who are in out of district placements, we knew kids who would potentially, who could be in out of district placements, and we allocated a cost to that. But now we're in January of 2023, we've had changes since that date, right? And sometimes they're to our benefit, maybe a student did age out or did move out of the district, and we lost that cost. But then we can also have kids moving into the district. So most of the time, it works out, and we neck towards zero. But some years, if you're kind of unlucky, and you could have an additional cost of anywhere from a collaborative placement of $30,000 to $40,000 to an out of district private placement that could be up to $350,000 for one student. So it's quite all over the map. In addition to that, the last week in September, OSD put out a memo stating that all private out of school, out of district tuitions were going up by 14%. That's an unheard of rate. So luckily for us, we got that memo the week leading into submitting our budget. But if it had been the week after, I would have had a budget that did not have that increase in it. We also know that's for the privates. We don't have very many student private placements, but we do have a lot of collaborative placements, and we don't know if they're going to increase their costs. They are managed by the local school district, so we have a little bit of control over that as being school committee members. But we, again, don't know if they're going to go up 8%, where normally years they've gone up anywhere from 2% to 3%. So there's a risk in that, too.
I think, Ashley, when that first 14% piece came out, we calculated it to be about $85,000. So that got added in. But that's a teacher. I mean, if you don't have that, well, you have to look for it. That's, you know, that could be a teacher that we're not able to, to bring on board. And the other piece, too, with transportation from McKinney-Vento, which Ashley could talk a little bit about that. We do have more homeless children than you might think we have in Mashpee. It's not something that gets, you know, we try to keep it private and respectful for families, but we do make sure that we provide the transportation. And Ashley's pretty creative, working with the collaborative, working with other outside providers sometimes to figure out, and we sometimes can collaborate with other districts to figure out how we can get our kids to and from school. So that's in there, too.
So recognizing that because of the timeline, when you had to provide your budget to the town manager, are you aware of any significant changes that the school committee should be informed of prior to our discussion and vote on the budget? Or will you be able to provide that to us at the next meeting so that we can have, make an informed decision?
Yes, we have three areas where we have seen changes since we submitted to the town manager, and I can provide you a detailed listing of that for the next meeting.
Okay. I think that would be helpful.
And I'm hoping prior to your vote to have had a follow-up conversation with the town manager so that we don't end up with an experience like we had last year in terms of making sure we're all on the same page.
Well, that, that was the question that I was going to ask, which you kind of partially answered. But you did have a meeting with, with the town manager, with FinCon representative. Other than nodding of heads, did you get any feedback in regard to this is too high, this is about what we thought, anything that you'd be able to convey to the school committee or subsequently be able to provide to the school committees before?
Well, if you went with minimal head nodding or head this way, and, or questions, we would assume we're all on the same page. But we know that that's not how that's, that's going to be. So I think having a separate conversation, the only questions that were brought up at that point, which is on a later slide, was related to a capital item.
Okay.
That's the only thing that seemed to raise a little bit of conversation.
I would appreciate if you-
I will have that for you by the 18th. That is my goal, to make sure. Yes, yes.
Matt, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Kathy's, okay. Okay, please continue. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back on this page. Any other questions on this? It's just really sort of trying to capture the reality. This slide shows, and it doesn't show the FY23, but the orange line is the percent growth in our budget, correct, Ashley?
Yes.
And then the blue represents our actual expenditures in those years. So you can see how we've been pretty well flatly funded for, since FY18, which then, you know, FY17 was trying to make up a little bit for, I think it was a .14 that year, something like that. Any questions on this? Mr. Myers, you're pondering.
He's good.
He's good. This is our district enrollment, and you can see that we definitely do have the decline. We, we always get our question at FinCon, which we will probably get this year as well. You know, why are we not decreasing, which you'll see on the next slide, like staffing and things like that, which we, we have been decreasing over time, but then some other areas have increased. Has to do with, you know, if I had 20 students, I'll leave out of third grade, I'd be good. I would definitely be able to cut a teacher, but it's just a sort of a slower decline. But you can see each of the schools.
Just a question on that last slide. The pre-K to-
Two. Pre-K to two?
To Coombs or, well, I guess a Coombs school. You're projecting a big increase?
Well, it's not a big increase, but-
Relatively speaking.
Yes. We have a pretty strong interest in school choice at that grade level. We, we do offer school choice in kindergarten if the numbers work. But that's usually when we do the FY24, we've looked at the census, and we've gone back, and we sort of do some weird math to come up with some sort of potential pattern of a multiplier.
Ashley, how many babies are going to be born?
Well, you kind of look and you figure out when they're going to hit the preschool age.
Impact, yeah, exactly. But maybe that's still another-
You've got a couple more years. But also, you can see where we did dip in that age level, and that was during the COVID year. So our preschool numbers are back up. They're also offering the opportunity for after-school with the rec department. So it's a little bit more attractive for families to bring their students back at that age level.
That is true. There were a lot of homeschooled children during those COVID years at that level.
Okay.
This is the teacher FTE. This is 137 is teachers, not necessarily our whole staff, which is closer to 200. But you can see projected for FY24 is 137. We currently have 135 teachers.
And just to clarify, FTE is full-time employee?
Yes, FTE is a full-time equivalent teacher, yes.
For the public.
Yeah, that's good.
And I mean, that's interesting, too, Patty, because it's obviously, staff levels have come down. Even with the projected addition of 137, we're still lower than we were, you know, for many years in terms of that.
Yeah, so the pre-COVID time there. So then we have as part of our budget, the CIP request, which I did talk about. So we're requesting $50,000 in Chromebook leases, $25,000 in interactive, probably should have said interactive, not interaction, white board systems, and then $90,000 is for the public address system and bell system upgrade at Mashpee Middle High School. Those three items total the $165,000, which ties to what was on the previous slides. We have that currently built into our FY24 operating budget, and it will get removed if we have the funding through CIP, which, like I say, we have generally been very well supported there. So I don't anticipate that being denied. These are considered necessities, so we would, we would have to figure out something if they don't approve them. And then also, not built into the operating budget, but we keep a food service $25,000 capital request every year, as to, most of our kitchen equipment is original to whenever that building was built. Any questions? So then also for CIP, because the town controls the facilities, there are CIP requests that are put in through the DPW that are school-related. And so the projects that are currently under Director Catherine Laurent's request list, the HVAC upgrades at all three schools, flooring replacement, all three schools, that's in there every year, MMHS roof repair and replacement, the Quashnet and the middle high school music rooms, the replacement of the acoustical tile wall coverings, and then the Quashnet gymnasium vestibule. Those are currently on the CIP request list that Catherine Laurent puts in, but we support. Those are currently on the CIP request list that Catherine Laurent puts in, but we support. This is a big one.
Yeah, and just to clarify, um when you see a line like, like you said, flooring replacement, we're not replacing all the floors, we're replacing the spots that need repairs.
Right, so they'll, so gen- they do a really good job identifying, but principals do as well. So sometimes it's carpet replacement. Most of the carpets that have been put in recently, they are like three by three squares, so you don't have to do the whole thing. You just take up one of the squares. Sometimes it's tile replacement. Sometimes it's converting a carpet to a tile based on a certain need. So it's things like that. They have sort of a, an ongoing plan for making sure that they keep the um schools looking great, which they absolutely do. They do a great job.
And the, excuse me, Don, one follow-up, and the question, uh, the gymnasium vestibule is related to hosting elections. That's relative, related to if the Quashnet school will continue to be used for uptown elections. That was a requirement that we put forward.
Right, yes.
Yes, Don?
So on this list is the um roof repair at the high school?
Yes.
And I think that's been on that list for several years. Are we currently experiencing problems at the high school in order to what we had here? Before we had to get this roof repaired?
Oh, no, not quite, not like this. Um and I don't know, Ashley might be able to speak to it. I know there are, there are isolated leaks up there.
There are, there are leaks at the high school. Um I wasn't here for the Quashnet one. But because there are solar panels on the roof, we are working with the company to determine when they're being taken off, how we can repair or replace. So it's um a global conversation and we put it on the list. It's been on the list, but it, I don't know if it moved up. But to work in conjunction with the company to take down the panels, to replace or repair, depending on what's needed, and then reinstall solar panels.
Cause if I remember right, it was roughly ten million dollars to do this one, and it was a long process to get that um approved. We were lucky to get state funding, et cetera, so I did not, I don't know. Does the town have a realistic plan to replace the roof or to patch the roof? Is it a patch?
So there's not details yet that have come out of it. As we were having a broader discussion through the budget process, we had talked about with the HVAC project, not just the school project, but the whole town project, um going out for a bond. And if it was to, if we were going to do that, we would most likely include other projects, like the roof replacement would be in that package. But again, that's, I think for further discussion as we go into CIP, nothing's been finalized yet.
And not that I, I have no knowledge of what that would cost for that roof, but the ten million that you cited for this, remember, included all the windows, all the doors, all the bathrooms being upgraded to ADA. So there were a few more pieces, not just the roof, just, just for the people out there. Just for people who are listening to this.
Two more things that get added.
Yeah, no.
I wouldn't be surprised, you know, um if we have to replace windows at the high school and, and other things too, so. I had just written down the dollars on, on my notes, so.
Okay, so when we did present our budget to um the town manager, and we also include in that the CIP, which included the DPW piece. So the upgrades, the HVAC upgrades for the health and wellness of all of our students at all three buildings, that's the, the twenty-six million sort of is the uh construction and contingency piece of that at this point. We are exploring some other options, which there's an upcoming meeting. But in terms of that, we have funds that we're putting towards that project. So we have S R two funds of three hundred thousand, which they, both of these have um finite use, use-by dates. One is like twenty-
One, September twenty-three, and the following, September twenty-four.
So S R two, we have three hundred thousand. From S R three, it's a million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And then we have set aside or promised to use school choice program funds towards it of two million, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. So from these two grants and school choice program funds, we have a significant amount to put towards the project with the idea being that the Coombs school would be the first school done. So when you look at school choice program funds and whether others feel like, well, just take more out of that, understand that we have a plan for those funds, and it really is to improve the HVAC system in all three schools, but we'll do the Coombs school first. The information at the bottom of this slide, which I do think I will read, but I'm gonna read from here. So it says, or reminds everyone, students and teachers spend over six hours a day in the classrooms during the school year, often in buildings that are decades old and have inadequate heating, ventilation, and air conditioning or HVAC systems. Beyond minimizing COVID-nineteen transmission, indoor air quality also matters for student academic performance. This is especially important, given the learning loss that many children experienced because of the pandemic. Hot, stuffy classrooms make it harder for students to learn, and so do cold classrooms. And we do have a lot of hot, stuffy classrooms for a significant portion of the year. And then the last sentence there is, there is ample evidence that smart investments in school-building HVAC systems can reduce transmission of infectious disease while also improving learning and increasing well-being for students, teachers, and administrators. So this project is to really improve the learning and working experience of our fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-plus students, our close to, to two-hundred-and-twenty-five employees. We're a significant employer within the town, and the quality of the air in these buildings is really important. That's what this project will-
And one thing that's important for the S R three funding is that we had to do a survey of our stakeholders, and we went out to our stakeholders and talked about what we should use this funding for. And upgrading and repairing the HVAC system was the number one um response of all of our stakeholders. So we're listening to what the people want in our system, in our district. And if we are unable to go forward with the HVAC project, we will have to figure out a way to use approximately one point two million dollars and probably have to go back out to the stakeholders and re-survey. So this is something we've been talking about for over a year now. And it's really important to Mashpee Public Schools and student staff and the global community, the greater community.
We do anticipate at the January eighteenth meeting, having a presentation from Train. But I just wanna say that in addition to the three school buildings, there are several town buildings that are also on the list for having HVAC renovations. So it's the police station, there's town hall work, um and I, I think there was one other one. I'm not sure which one. So the Train organization, the group that's coming in, they're doing an analysis of all of the buildings, um and they'll be able to share some um different approach for possibly getting this project done.
Can you just refresh my memory in regard to um the impact then on school choice funds that will be remaining after we would support the two million dollars for um HVAC and also the seven hundred thousand that you're asking for to offset the appropriation request for FY twenty-four? What would be left?
So the, if we use this towards the project, we are still allocating the seven hundred and sixty-five thousand to the FY twenty-four budget, and we are still maintaining a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar floor.
So we have the two hundred and fifty thousand left.
Yes.
Your answer?
Yes. Nothing else, but yes. Okay. Any other questions on that? That's just the end. Um we have great students who work really hard. We have great teachers and administrators and clerical support. Everybody works really hard. We have a very supportive group of families. And I just um wanna emphasize again, a lot of low-level, I guess it's low-level detail, has gone into this budget so that every number, we know what it is. I wanna assure everyone that I take this responsibility pretty, um, it's a significant responsibility to make sure that I take care of the town's money, and um I can guarantee that we work really hard, and we do that every day. We monitor. And that this budget is definitely a budget that um is needed and will support the um learning needs of our students, so. Any other questions?
Thank you. You did a great job.
Yeah, thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
So um I don't, us-
Sorry.
I don't see um-
Where were you going?
I was saying, somebody-
Oh, no, there shouldn't be a vote there.
But yeah. Yeah, sorry, we'll not be voting tonight. Um do, does anybody wanna um comment? Any discussion on what we heard tonight?
Um I just wanna say thank you for the detail on the difference. I think seeing, you know, what happened last year and how you presented it, I think is a very clear picture. So thank you for putting the time to put that detail in there. Hopefully it will help the town understand and then the voters understand, you know, why it looks, the way it looks. So again, thank you for the detail of that, and I appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, I just don't, we just don't wanna lose track of sort of the changes particularly from what you voted.
Yeah, and it's awkward, but I mean, I thought, I think the way that was handled last year was pretty unprecedented to have a change come in just a few days before a town scheduled vote that we were not even notified of. And so uh I think that that is really anomalous in terms of the way our budget process typically works. And despite having to start eighteen months in advance, I think we do a pretty good job of not just being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, but also returning money to the town that goes unused in that appropriated budget, which we do every year. Um and we returned a significant portion last year, as I recall. The other thing I think is, I wanted to call out, I appreciate the specificity with, which you explained how we do the personnel side of the budget. You know, every, you know, not, we're not just putting a number in there that's a round estimate of what we think we're gonna be spending on our employees. Uh it's down to the individual employee. And so I, I appreciate that's a lot of work, but I think it's really um important if we're gonna stand behind a budget and say, you know, this is what we really need, cause it is, it is a lot of money. Also, thanks to Don's question, I think you also highlighted that roughly sixty percent of our operating budget is a little less known. And we have to live with the uncertainty of that throughout the year, knowing it could go one way or the other. And frankly, I think when we end up returning funds to the town, it is because uh we had uh an expense that uh didn't materialize or that, you know, we didn't have an unanticipated out-of-district come in. So um, so I think it's a, a really solid budget. I'm, I'm pleased and I, you know, we're not asking for, uh as you said, we're just trying to really keep pace with our costs at roughly two and a half percent a year. So I think that's a, a pretty reasonable request at this point. So I'm anxious to hear what the feedback is from uh the town manager. And um I think we do typically communicate that in advance of the meeting, uh not for discussion, but to the members when we-
I will.
When we learn of that, okay. Any other comments or questions about this, Matt?
No, I mean, like especially with like this last year, how everything has cost more to begin with. But that, that like we are looking at still staying within that range of what we normally would, that's pretty impressive. So, you know, good of us for like all the, you know, due diligence has been applied, so like, you know, every detail. Be able to make it like just that level, cause if you look at the potential increase on anything else that might be marketed and checked out right now, but this is, yeah.
So one thing I'd like to highlight before we close on it is, we do reduce where we can, and if we know that we can offset with other funding options. So we always highlight increases when we talk about the budget, cause people are always looking at that. But we have reductions in our operating budget for both Coombs and Quashnet going into FY twenty-four because we saw that we didn't need those, those monies for the following year, or we had grant funding to offset some of these expenditures. That's one time in nature. So I can't promise that for every year, but that's where we do have a cost savings going into FY twenty-four.
Don?
So I just wanna reiterate that I think you guys have done a great job putting together this presentation. It was very helpful um to go through, and I appreciate responding to my questions and um following up on the items that I've asked you to look into. One thing that just came to mind a second ago, because that's what happens when you all of a sudden, it just pops out. I was just thinking about um President Biden, and he was at some ceremony about funding a new bridge. And so there's all this trillions of dollars floating out there. And um I'm, I'm hopeful that you guys have looked at or, or maybe you're aware of if there's any potential funding for infrastructure buried in that big pot of money. The other question that I do have is in regard to um the free lunch program. I don't recall, is that a one-year extension? And so are we in our budget right now? We're not doing anything, right? So it would go back to costing families and students next year-
Correct.
Based on this. I would appreciate for the next meeting, if you would be able to tell us what that amount would be if we continued that program.
I'm looking at Ashley because it's gonna be her thing.
I'm looking at her, cause now she's the one that would do the work. Cause I, I think that has been a, a big benefit to um the students and to their families. And um I'm, I'm hopeful that these state will continue that again. But, you know, we have a new governor, new priorities. I don't know, but I know they've got a lot of money. So hopefully that's one of the things that they will find um is of merit to spend.
I will give you at a high level, it will, it's not gonna be a great analysis, but because it's all revenue that's coming in that we will look at. And the state was delayed in giving us our reimbursement, so we're a little bit lagging in that right now, but I can give you the information I have.
Yeah, well, well, just like everything else, get us in the ballpark. Thank you.
Okay, um so that sort of finishes us up for tonight. We don't want to see any more public comment. And I don't think I have anything else to add today, so um we're gonna call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Ashley.